You know, exposed.
Wonder if it's warmer in Indiana than it is here. I have nine o'clock.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, religiously, standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
Are we bidding opening bids just for the pastor or for the county farm too?
We already did town farm a week ago last week. Let's play the pastor.
On favor. Proven minutes of the September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Next, approved employee claims filed with county auditor for one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty one cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Two claims filed with the county auditor for one million eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty four dollars and fifty five cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Approve the resignation of Doug Ger, part-time seasonal health roadside management.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Through the renewal of the medical examiner's contract and appoints the medical.
Okay, that information was all in your packet here. I did send the previous contract to Josh up in the attorney's office to review. Unfortunately, the way the Iowa code states, three thirty-one, eight oh one, it states that the term will commence on the first day in January that is not a weekend or holiday. Well, unfortunately, January first is a holiday, always has been and always will be.
But that reads okay.
Huh?
That reads okay. That's not, it does not.
So our contract has always been effective starting January first. Well, according to the code, it can't because January first is a holiday.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. So we had to match our language.
Yeah. So what we did, what we come up with is basically we changed the termination to it will commence December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at eleven fifty-nine for a two-year period until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven at eleven fifty-eight.
Why couldn't we just match what the language of code had?
Because our contract stated it would commence January first. For Iowa code, it cannot commence January first because it can't be a holiday.
But could we just change the language of the contract to match? It doesn't matter. It sticks with one half, doesn't the other? I was just curious question.
No matter what, January first is always going to be a holiday, so it cannot commence on January first. I don't know where the code reads it. It makes absolutely zero sense. But I sent it over to the hospital. They were okay with it. Josh was okay with it. So that's the changes on the contract. And then we did remove. The hospital requested that Dr. Jasper be removed from the medical examiner list because he no longer takes calls. As far as the commencement and termination date, that's the same as what is the contract on these appointments to the medical examiners.
Let me read off the names. Dr. Kirk House will be the official medical examiner. Dr. Rick McCormick, Dr. William Schmidt, Dr. David Fady, and Dr. Jack O'Brien are our deputy medical examiners. And they have them on there.
Yeah, so the list is the same. They do have, I think there's three medical examiner investigators that they go out on the scene the majority of the time, and then it's up to, they turn in the paperwork and it's up to the doctors to officially approve it to submit to the state.
You have motion to approve the renewal of medical examiner's contract and appoint the medical examiner.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Next, we need to set public hearings for the comprehensive land use plan amendment.
Information was in your package. I put the guidance from Amber regarding this. And the resolution that you're going to approve basically gives the pages of what changes were made. And in here, we put all three dates for the three public hearings. One is September twenty-ninth at nine twenty, October sixth at nine fifteen, and the third reading Monday, October thirteenth at nine fifteen.
Your motion is that so the date still a public hearing?
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, if you can get the part-time thing discussed in four minutes, probably.
Give it a try.
You have too many departments here to get through it. I'm gonna tell you that at night. But we can try. Maybe a forward update. Wait a minute, that's not on our list.
Oh, we left it off again.
Well, you guys get the agenda.
Public comments for the board?
Yeah, we can do that. Public comments, please be brief, about three minutes per person. Ready out there? Okay, Elena.
Elena Schmitz, I'm chairman of our zoning commission, Buchanan County Zoning Commission. I'd like to speak about last week's supervisors' meeting with newly presented information to the board of public regarding their proposed battery energy storage systems. Proper procedure for a zoning request involves contacting environmental health and zoning office. They will advise you to put your request on the Planning and Zoning Commission monthly attendant if you want to. The request will be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission and a decision will be reached that will then be provided to the Buchanan County Supervisors. Supervisors will render a decision based on the zoning ordinance and the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. When we open a meeting, this is part of what we tell the public. Our role is to conduct fact-finding for the Board of Supervisors. We will attempt to come up with recommendations for the Supervisors. They will make the final decision on these requests approximately three or four weeks in the future. Keith, you can attend these planning and zoning meetings. You can even speak and tell us your opinion. But that must be done as a citizen and not as a supervisor. However, this time, you have circumvented proper proceedings. First, newly contacted the Environmental Health and Zoning Office in April. They were told they needed to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Amber never Amber never heard back from them. Next, we get an email from Keith wanting Amber and a couple of zoning commissioners to meet with him and a newly represented outside of proper procedure. So I wonder, Keith, are you the only one in the county that does not have to follow laws and procedures? You've started lawsuits based on the understanding that people are not following the laws and procedures. Do you consider yourself exempt? You shall contempt your fellow county employees and citizens by circumventing procedure. Any other citizen must follow this procedure for zoning requests. As a supervisor, your role is to wait for an application represented to the board and vote on it based on the zoning ordinance and the commission recommendation. Now, your personal opinion. This request from newly has been delayed due to your interference with procedure. If you're contacted by anyone or a company, you need to let them know what the proper procedure is and then wait for that to happen. You believe that a change is needed to the zoning ordinance, request placement on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. At the time, you can render your opinion as a citizen, but not as a supervisor. Regardless of your personal opinion about property rights, your responsibility as Buchanan County Supervisor is to follow the current Buchanan County zoning ordinance that is in effect. If you feel that you cannot do this, then you should resign. Thank you.
Hey, we got nine ten. I need a motion to open the business for the pastor run away.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Received six bids. You should have a bid sheet.
And they do, they do know that the driveway is, like I said, driveway for Tower, right?
I don't even know what submitted bids because they're not marked on the envelope. It's only on the bid sheets that they're marked. I'm sure I believe that Mer Beach is in the contract. Okay, so first bid we received was from Albert Cattle. And that was for one hundred an acre. Second bid is from Hayden Weber Frontier pasture cattle. One fifty-seven. Uh, next bid is Fordy Cattle Philip and Rob Dudley for one ten an acre. Next bid is from Kenley Dutwiler.
I didn't put it down as per acre. I didn't realize I was supposed to, so whatever that comes out to.
Was his bid was six thousand.
The acres we have, wasn't it?
Ninety-three point five. Sixty-four seventeen per acre. Brian and Patrick Donnelly, eighty-five per acre. Last bid to open is Ryan Alaplan, one hundred per acre.
You know what?
One hundred.
One hundred.
Um. When you ask if anybody wants to raise bids, when they raise their bid, or if they raise their bids, and they state their name, so I can make sure I get everything down.
Good. Currently, our high bid is Weber at one hundred and fifty-seven an acre. And at this point, if you are interested in raising your bid, please raise your hand, say your name.
Brian Donnelly, one hundred and sixty.
Sixty. Anyone else interested in raising their bid? If not, say.
Albert Cattle, one seventy.
One seventy. Anyone else? Right?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five for Donnelly. Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna close the bids. So a high bid will be Donnelly's at one seventy-five per acre.
So you will need a motion to approve that and authorize the chair to sign the contract once it's been updated.
I'll make the motion to approve the high bid of one hundred and seventy-five to Donnelly's and allow the chairman of the board to sign the contract.
Favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your participation. Station time. Yes. Perhaps it's up to you, and I'll let you pick it off.
I have an employee that has maxed out his comp time for the employee handbook at forty hours, which I understand after that it would be paid out. I was wearing a competing exception in his case due to his personal situation. He needs an additional twenty-eight point five hours passed out to be able to secure comp time for the trip that he has coming up next year. If we utilize his vacation time that he would have, which would be all this vacation time, his floating holiday, the holiday that would normally fall during that time, and the forty-hour comp time, he still needs twenty-eight point five hours.
And I guess it is for transparency, what are the circumstances of this request?
The circumstance is that he will be attending his official wedding in Vietnam. And during that time, his hope is to be able to bring his wife back here with a visa.
We might have some immigration meetings, some things to attend as well.
Yeah, I think it's already done. Yeah. The paperwork's processing, but his hope is once the official wedding is over, that he can bring her back.
He arrived in the country, that's, that's when we meet with the CIS. It'll be submitted.
I'm big, you're involved. I just work here. And if it's not approved to go beyond that, he is fine getting not paid for that time. He's pretty flexible with it. I just think as his employer, we could make the exception for that.
Unfortunately, if we make an exception for one person, no matter what the circumstances, and then we have to make an exception for another person. So, you know, that sets precedence and you know, I just don't believe in, I think it should be straight across the board one way or another. So, I mean, that's just how my personal feelings on it.
It's a pretty exceptional process in immigration itself. And then if another employee were doing an international adoption, be a similar situation where we should consider that as well. I think it's a great thing to do.
You know, Brian Kiley called me about this and is out of town at me or at the conference, so he's unable to be here. He sent Phil Fangman in to represent secondary roads on this issue because they have unique circumstances also. And Phil, you want to kind of fill us in on that?
As far as what do you?
As far as carry over on some comp time simply because of our road maintenance in the winter time, we get caught up in snow plowing and oftentimes it results in excessive amounts of comp time. That was, that was Brian's concern.
As far as what? I guess, I guess I don't understand what he's, what he's, was concerned or what's concerned about with our forty-hour limit, your forty-yard cap is pretty small. Just because it's really actually costing you more money than half that at forty hours. I really think that should be eighty or more, a little more than that because you have situations like this, he's gonna run on vacation, he's running on whatever it takes to get for this situation. We run into that issue. A lot of these guys sometimes blow, you know, their max of that really quick and under timed.
Right.
If, if we could raise that to eighty hours, that would just make that just a lot easier to spool. Because then it doesn't cost you guys nothing. Because just because they're not here, as soon as them guys step in the door, it costs this county money. So here he's gonna be out of everything just because he's stuck at forty hours.
So when we earn comp time, Ashley, is it one turned out of one, one by one, or is it one and a half to one? So when I'm providing eighty, forty hours of comp time to somebody, I'm actually providing sixty hours on the county dollars. So I don't see how that really costs the county money because I'm providing.
No, that, that's not the way it is.
That's amazing.
Yeah, no. Unfortunately, the problem is it's a liability to the county. And I agree, Phil, with the guys, how fast it accumulates, especially if it is bad winter. However, if you allow an employee to earn eighty hours of comp time, every year they take forty. They carry that other forty for five years. You think about what that salary was that they earned it at and what the county's paying it out. They could be earning it at twenty dollars an hour and it's going to be paid out at twenty-eight. That's where we get in trouble, what the auditors do not like to see, unfortunately. That's that's what we've always been told.
Right. And I understand what you're saying. However, so if, for eight hours, say somebody worked four hours of comp time. And so when we, when they're taking that comp time, they're actually allowed to take time and a half. Is that not correct? So that forty, that, that four hours then turns into six hours of time that they get off.
If they, over their weekly limit, they select my staff. Thirty-seven and a half hours is what they work. However, you do not earn comp time until after forty. So from thirty-seven point five to forty, it's that straight time. Anything after forty is that time and a half. So if they have forty-one, then that's an hour and a half of comp time.
Right, okay. But for the normal average citizen, so they can understand what we're saying, let's just do it an hour per hour. Like that thirty-seven point five, that's a, that's a whole different scale that normal people don't have. Normal people.
Okay, I think those is forty. Are you guys?
Yeah, those guys are forty.
Okay, so if they work forty-two hours, then they have two hours times one point five.
Right. So then they're actually paying them a half hour extra for the comp time that they earned, just like if we paid out time and a half.
Because it's calculated at one point five. Yes, you are correct.
Okay, so that is also counting, costing the county additional dollars with the comp time.
If we pay it.
Okay, well, if we pay it out or if we take it, I mean, they're not here. So if they're not here, then I have to find somebody else to make up that position or make up that job or do what they're gonna do during that day. It's like a vacation day, only it's a day and a half vacation day.
I understand. Yes.
In my situation, he does not pay it out. That's what he's trying to avoid.
And I understand your situation. I, I understand Long's situation and he's a very diligent employee.
Could we, could we ask the employees to use the comp time within the next hunting season? It seems like that's, that's the big use for secondary roads to be able to use that during a certain amount of time.
Right, because in my case, my guys will use that as time. So that doesn't cost you nothing.
It'll cost me time and a half for them to be off. It costs me an extra half hour for every hour where they're off.
There's a lot of guys from secondary roads involved in farming operations, so that they're in the season, they like to use it.
I understand that too. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be mean about anything like this. But also, I know I have a sheriff's union contract that they're capped at forty. And they're the people that are doing town events and everything else, and they're the people that are gonna get caught in also in climate weather instances. So, you know, we have one contract that says forty, we match the home plate handbook to that contract because that seems like that's a week. I mean, we're talking a week. So essentially, if they're gonna take off, that'd be a week and a half. You know, and, and I know that we can do flex time if we need to. Like if so, if somebody in secondary roads has thirty-five hours and they know they're coming up on forty and they have to work late one night for something, maybe they can show up early or take off early the next day and not have that go against their, their time off.
If you want to do it as flex time.
Right. I mean, departments have, has to have that discretion. I just, I feel like if we're gonna make an exception for one, though, then where does it stop? Because then we're making an exception for this person, that person, the other person. I had training, I had this, I had that, I have you know, the snow, I mean, and granted, snow is gonna be a huge thing this winter if it continues to rain like it's been. Ashley?
I mean, I certainly see both sides. And is secondary roads capped at, is it eighty for their contract? Or is it forty for their contract as well? So we're all forty. Sheriff's secondary roads. Okay.
So their contract is forty-two. So the only place, the only thing in secondary roads, and we're talking as management and non-union.
Yeah. Um. I mean, I certainly see both sides and I would like to, I mean, I don't have the authority to approve, but looking at if you start one thing for one employee, then you're gonna have to do it for more. There's, there could be issues, but that just comes with anything. In the handbook, it does say exceptional circumstances. So those are rare, unavoidable, or extraordinary situations. Again, just some examples, that could be like natural disasters, major unexpected life events, unique operational needs of the department that would qualify for exceeding that forty-hour limit. However, I mean, I see both sides. I'm just looking at, as HR, per the policy, what exceptional circumstances fall under. However, you can kind of have your own impression of what that means for each situation. But I'm just reading per the policy of what exceptional circumstances are the rare, unavoidable, or extraordinary situations. And I can read those examples off again.
Just I want to be apathetic to what his situation is. But at the end of the end, it's not like it's an unplanned event. This has been in process for what, two years?
Yeah, I plan personal events such as, you know, we're talking about, that would not fall under the exceptional circumstances. I know that for a fact.
However, I mean, I, exactly. I truthfully see both sides. And like Jason said, Long is aware of this, not trying to create any issues. I think it's great to discuss, but that exceptional circumstance language, I know that it can kind of fall into what people deem what is exceptional. But for like HR and legal terms, that would be like natural disasters, unexpected life events, like serious illness, death in the family, caregiving emergencies, and then for operational needs, that would be more of like a one-time special project requiring extra hours, which that would certainly probably happen. You know, so that's kind of what the exceptional circumstances.
So I guess our options are we either deny the request to change the policy exception basis. We establish a exception for a one-time event for either an additional twenty hours or of comp time. It's just a slippery slope when you deal with something like this.
Right. And he knew about it. He knew it was coming up.
Yeah. And I think he's been very understanding.
And we also have, as Jason said, to And we also have, as Jason said, too, um, we have an unpaid leave. That, uh, in the handbook, there's a whole process there, um, he would just need to write a letter to his department head saying he's gonna need. A week or a week and a half off unpaid due to personal reasons, that's in the handbook, and if it exceeds over thirty days of unpaid leave. That's when it would need to be brought to the board of supervisors to be approved, to be out, um, longer than thirty days. Uh, so in his case, it would be maybe around a week and a half, or. Um, depends, but that's something that Jason had wanted to figure out too, again, I see both sides, um. I, I really do, just reading per policy of what exceptional means.
Another aspect that the, the public may not be aware of is at the end of the fiscal year, we have to carry that liability over, so if anybody has. Um, comp time balance, that's something we have to hold on our folks for the next year to make sure we have.
The handbook, that it needs to be taken, however, there is circumstances that have been presented to the board to allow an employee to clear it over. Otherwise, it does have to be paid out per the handbook policy, and I believe the con, the union contracts have some type of language in that also. That it either needs to be used up or paid out.
Yes.
Yeah, I know we. Let them do that on exception basis. So I guess, uh, for these to. Make a decision on what they wanna do, and I would entertain a motion to what you wanna. Rule on it.
I make a wish that we do not accept the exceptions.
I will second it. All in favor? Alright.
Do you want to call Chris?
Yes, please.
Sorry.
We'll look at it.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda to discuss county farm filing repairs for Anderson Farm. Brian?
Morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate it.
And these are repairs or new tile?
It needs a new main, put up, Mark Crawford's here as well, uh, through his property. It's been something that's been. Been needed to be done for some time now, and. Just need to initiate the process.
The last tallying that was done has overloaded my system, where now I'm getting extra, extra wet, you know, and I can't do the tasks I need to do.
In addition, I was hoping that Brian would be here, but. In Mark's property, the railroad goes through, and it's an issue getting through the, through the, under the railroad. To get a, a better outlet for the entire system. Hoping that you have a relationship with the railroad that might help me to find you out it. What do you do?
That you don't, you are getting, I understand.
These are people that please.
No, I'm gonna need more information, and you're gonna have to explain some, some of this, like, I mean, just, this brief overview, I need a little more details, please.
Okay, so if there's a. Geography map in there to be attached. Approximately sixty, sixty acres on the county's property, that is currently being drained through Mark. That is existing older cement tile that's in disrepair. Collapsing in on itself. Has been some additional tile installed on the farm as well, as Mark said. Overloading his system. Majority of what needs to be done is an actual update to what's existing.
So it's not really a repair, you wanna totally do new tile?
In essence, that's what it takes to do the repairs, new material.
That wasn't really answering my question. So are you gonna take the old tile out and put new tile in? Are we doing?
You'd pull on a new line next to the existing tile and abandon the.
So you're abandoning the old tile, so we're not, we're not repairing the old tile, you're adding, you're putting in new tile.
Exactly, the old concrete tile is, is, it's just by nature, anybody will, they'll predict to that, it's just. It's longevity of it is, is, it's.
So.
We've been repairing it on our own for the last forever. Be a blow up or, and water run on top of the ground, we just take care of it. It's time that something needs to be, different needs to be done. To help alleviate some of Mark's problems too.
What's written in the contract, is this, is this our responsibility, or is this?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Repairing tile would be new, our responsibility, but adding new would not be our responsibility, is that correct?
No, any, any maintenance on the county farm, that's the landlord's responsibility.
I wouldn't say this is maintenance.
It's not, it's very similar to what the posters, like the fencing, the weed control, the brush control, that is the responsibility of the landlord. That's something like this is typical for anyone renting land, as a landlord, you are responsible for the maintenance.
Did talk to other farmers, and they would say adding new tile to.
I believe from my understanding, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, it is adding new tile, but it's due to the fact that the existing tile is not working, it's shot over the years, it's just. It, it, it's no different than maintenance on your house, you know, after a year's time, your garage door goes bad and you have to. Replace it, you can only repair it so much, and that's the same thing with field tile.
But even with the repair, you're still adding, you're still buying new.
Correct.
New parts to repair it, basically, that's what we're doing here, it's just, it's a larger. Repair.
How much, how much is this gonna cost us on top of the thirty-four thousand we already lost?
Um. The goal of this meeting is to initiate the process. We're gonna do it, it's, it's gonna require a large main, that's gonna require an outside party to install.
Do we have any price estimates on it?
Well, it'd be something we'd like to involve a, a private contractor to, uh, make that estimate and, and do the work.
I'm, I wouldn't be hesitant to agree to anything until I would actually have a price in.
But I agree.
I think that's a little need there.
This is just preliminary.
I would say get some bids or a pen.
I would.
We, make a decision based on that.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's. It's going to be costly. Especially having that with the rural rail safety that's always challenging. And I don't know, secondary roads may be able to help a little bit on some excavation or something like that, but, uh. Tylers, uh, generally have all the equipment they need to accomplish those things.
In knowledge and experience, right. And the liability insurance and, and.
Certain.
It just goes on and on, uh, do you have a list of contractors that you would prefer to use for to get bids from?
I think we wanna get preferential, I would say.
Right, who would you, you know the, you know the talent in the area, you know who you're, who you're, who, who does probably, um. The better jobs, like you don't wanna put something.
It's a slippery slope.
Saying you kinda, you don't wanna put something in that, that you're gonna have to repair in a year or two years, or, you know what I'm saying?
There's several in the county that are very reputable and have worked.
I would leave that up to your discretion to get those.
Okay, I'll be, would you like? Sorry, how many bids would you like?
Oh, three, yeah.
I think that would be appropriate, yeah, okay.
All right, proceed from there.
Okay, well, we'll get bids and, uh, and, uh, a plan and talk to you after we have that available.
I can reach out to the railroad and see what they have to say about crossing there right away.
I would actually, if the tiling companies are going to do that, they probably already have had to reach out to railroads, and we might have their own connections, that might be a better connection than we would have, just kind of.
I doubt that, and I don't. I think it'd be more for, for me reaching out, really.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. And part of the situation is, is the railroad that has settled, and the culvert is like a goal line now. And it actually raised on the inlet end, so it covered up my outlet, so my outlet's two feet underwater now.
Oh, okay, so your outlet is on one side, is our, is our tile dreading into your outlets?
I'm taking all your water, or the sixty acres.
Yeah.
Of that.
Is there, is there a way to reroute that into a different direction to where we don't have to contact the railroad, because it's just gonna be, I, I, I'm just saying, realistically, that's gonna add time.
Ideally, what needs to be done is it needs to be bored under the railroad and a pipe quit down at the lower ends. Actually, his pipes are, what are they, six or eight feet cast iron? It's, it's a sight to see, actually, it was probably put in, what, nineteen forty or?
I have no idea.
Something to see, but, but the railroad bit has settled, which you know what it does to a, a plastic culvert.
Yeah.
It ticks the ends up. This cast iron has done the same thing, so it's, actually his outlet that used to be down here now has to go over that edge of that pipe. And it's.
That's the current active railroad, uh, line going through there, yes. And you would think it'd be their responsibility to maintain. I haven't gotten anywhere.
Like taking care of intersections. Okay.
Well, I mean, to me, this, if, if they would sign off on, you know, the qualified parties to bore underneath. It wouldn't interfere with their railroad bed and would alleviate our issues.
I'm thinking that like western trenching, trenching or someone like that would have enough liability that. It would be able to do any of that.
Do you know how much, how, um, much more expensive to boring underneath, that's gonna be, then?
It's the liability, like you said, for the railroad, that's, that's gonna matter.
Right, I'm just saying, like, what, what's gonna be the added cost of boring underneath that, as opposed to what's going on?
Oh, separate issues, I think, though.
That would be something we could also get an estimate on.
Please.
It won't be inexpensive.
Have it done one, have it estimated one way and have it estimated another, if you could.
Can I get your contact information after the meeting?
Yeah, sure, that works, yeah, if you don't mind.
So I guess I would like a, uh, motion to have Henderson's, uh, pursue getting bids to the tile replacement, and. Mr. Wieland, uh, contact, uh. His contacts at the railroad. And get back to us with what our.
Sounds great.
Ability is, so if I can get a motion on that.
I'll make a motion right away, yes.
Yeah, second.
I'm not liking any part of this conversation, I feel like we've cost the county a lot of money.
Yes, hundred.
Second, all in favor?
That's all right, right away, so. Yes. Yes, a hundred please.
John, I'm sorry, I didn't have to agree, did you vote for or against?
I'm sorry.
I voted for it, because I feel like I had no other option.
Oh, you always have an option, that's one of those.
I know, I always have an option. I have, I can, I can vote against it.
No, I, I did not hear you, so I just wanted to clarify for the minutes, please.
I did, just not very likely.
Thank you. Bumbled it, Chris.
Oh, that isn't it.
Yeah. All right. And that concludes the regular agenda, any public comments? Yes?
I'd like to learn from Brandon, it's on the proposed battery storage facility. I just wanna say that as usual, um, it seems we as citizens are being denied access to the information we need to make an informed decision. For what we do know, I can say the following, the idea that fully enclosed lithium ion batteries cannot burn due to lack of oxygen is false. Lithium fire is a runaway exothermic reaction, it does not need external oxygen to burn. Lithium fire will burn in a perfect vacuum, including in outer space, um, furthermore, lithium is violently reactive with water. Not only will it spontaneously combust in contact with water, but will continue to burn if fully immersed in water, the reaction somewhat of throwing a match on the gasoline. Except it burns much hotter than a gasoline fire, outside this building, I could demonstrate the reaction by performing a simple chemistry experiment where I drop a small body of lithium. Into a beaker of water and it will burst into flame with no ignition source, but I suspect you will let me do this on my own property, so I can provide you with videos of it instead. We don't have to ignore the fact that battery facility fires can and have been extremely serious. I'll point to the Moss Landing Battery Storage Facility as an example, fires like this burn for days, sometimes even weeks, it takes literally millions of gallons of water to put these fires out. In the Moss, Moss Landing case, literally thousands of people had to be evacuated because the smoke is extremely toxic. Firefighters were not able to extinguish this fire and chose instead to simply let it burn itself out, the toxical, the toxic chemical contamination these fires can take years to clean up. Are there any evacuation plans in place for this type of disaster? Do our rural fire departments have plans for where they're going to get the millions of gallons of water required to finally extinguish this fire? Does the company planning to build this facility have any plans for what could be a multi-year cleanup if a fire should break out? Proving this facility is not something BOS can rush or take lightly, it requires the PNC to write new rules for this type of facility. And it requires the information from the facility about what kinds of plans are in place to handle accidents, the company claims this facility is different and a moss landing type accident cannot happen here. We've heard this story before, accidents that cannot happen here routinely do happen. I can cite dozens of cases where this is true, unfortunately, out of the case of Nextera, wind turbine plants. Seem to be part, unfortunately, as the case of wind turbine, Nextera's wind turbine plants, this seems to be par for the course, the project, the project is covered in a blanket of secrecy. And we have systems that are not being given the information we need to make an informed decision.
I responded to that, John.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I understand what you're saying, and I, I've walked down that, that road of, of Nextera with you guys before, um. However, when me and John did discover this, we did bring it out, and we did have the company, um, come into the boardroom via Zoom. And you have all the information that we have. We have not been, we have not tried to hide this, once, once.
I'm, I'm, I'm not blaming you, I'm blaming the company for not being transparent, basically.
Well, and, and we don't even know if they are transparent at this point in time, these are initial contacts, they did contact, um, planning and zoning in April. And, um, we just found out about it, so then, when we found out about it, we did bring it to the public so that everybody is on the same page. And we are, we are not hiding anything from you, I am in contact with somebody as to some different ordinances and stuff. Um, and I'm meeting with them this afternoon, and I will pass that information on to planning and zoning, because this is, this is one of their. You know, they need to be the one, um, involved in the zoning ordinances of this and this app accident and everything, so.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there.
Okay.
And let everybody know where we're at and what we're doing, and that we're not trying to hide anything, and.
Right.
You know, we also need to be aware that we are coming upon the twenty-first century, and we have a lot of, um. Changes in our electrical usage, and you know, every computer, every household now has at least one computer, if not three. Um, as in the case of my household, and so. You know, we need to be aware of our electrical uses and, uh, what we can do to perhaps alleviate our peak times. Without, without changing what we already have in place.
Right.
Anyone else, uh, I'll look at it. Yes, Mike.
Um. I understand what you're saying, um, you know. There's a lot more electricity being used, however, I don't know that Buchanan County is actually responsible to, uh. You know, power all of the data centers that they wanna bring in. I think that Buchanan County has a very unique sit, situation with the land that we have, and I believe that we're all supposed to be stewards of this land. We decided with Nextera that it was not worth the risk. To have providers brought in to the land in Buchanan County. I'm not really sure what's changed or what makes this different, uh, but also we talked about, or you talked, you discussed about, um.
You know, the comp.
You make an exception for one, you gotta make an exception for all, and it's an extremely proof statement, so how long will it take to make an exception? For this battery storage place on good land to come in? How long will it take for forms Nextera is knocking on the door again? Uh, because you can't start changing the zoning rules for one without changing it for all. Uh. My daughter is a firefighter. He, when I talked to her about this, um, he talked to a firefighter who knows a little bit more about it. And, um, his statement, word for word, was there's no way to really put them out, the fires out. They will just burn until there's nothing left to burn, and that's a little scary, especially when this is on land that isn't. Out in the middle of nowhere, it's close to Fontana Park, it's got a college community there, there's a little town there, it's communities, um, there's Hazelton right north. It's got a Polish community there, there's a little town there, it's communities, um there's Hazelton right north of that. Uh there is, there's just all kinds of stuff around here, um. I I just think it's taking a huge, huge risk with these people. That there are, there are campgrounds. There, I don't, you know, the, the, it would be a nightmare to start evacuating the people and. The farm animals, um not to mention the people who have just house animals. Uh so I am, I am concerned about this, I know, I think this has to be a whole lot of thought. And I just think that we have to. Not because of this, because state of Iowa wants to put up data centers and creating more electricity.
Thank you, is there anyone else has comments? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, thanks everyone for attending.